Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, and we're here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers. And commissioners, we're calling our meeting to order this morning. We will start with invocation from our good friend Pastor Hazel from the Agape Fellowship Christian Center, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, Pastor. Thank you so much.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this lovely day you blessed us to see. We thank you for the rain. Oh, God, we thank you for life. We thank you for breath in our lungs. We thank you for purpose. We thank you for wisdom. We thank you for responsibility, for stewardship, oh, God. And Lord, I thank you for this meeting that is about to convene. I thank you for the Board of Commissioners, Lord. Oh, God, I thank you for the responsibility that you've given to each of them, Lord. And I pray for wisdom, for guidance, and for all that will speak, and everything that will be said and done over the next few moments. Lord, I pray it be to your glory and to your honor. Lord, I pray that, excuse me, I pray that the people of Rockdale County, Lord, will be best, will be well-served by all that will take place over the next few moments. And, God, we pray you'll get the glory out of all of it. And for these things, we thank you and we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Hazel, thank you so much. Certainly appreciate you and the good people over at Agape Fellowship Christian Center. I will add very briefly, commissioners, that they do offer a food pantry over at the church. And you can see when you pass by their on Flatshow's roll on the marquee, their advertising, the date and the times of their food pantry. And many people in our community are served by the good work of their food ministry, so we do appreciate it. Let's give the pastor a wonderful round of applause. Moving right along, we do have, we don't have any special recognitions this morning. That takes us down to item number four, the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from May 9th and May 16th of 2023. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second the motion.
Been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No unfinished business. Down to item number seven, the consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are now to the regular agenda. We have item 245, a special use permit case 2023-01, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended to authorize a special use permit for a 200-foot AGL monopole communication tower and related telecommunications facilities at 2400 Southwest Tucker Mill Road in Conyers to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a first reading this morning.
I move to approve the first reading and refer this ordinance to the plan and commission as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now time for public comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have not received any red cards.
No public comment. We're going to move right on into board comments, starting with Commissioner Washington. Go right ahead, Commissioner.
I think the chairman is trying to break my record, so I'm going, I am going to talk very slowly.
How you like me now? How you like me now? There's two cups of coffee, baby. One at Cracker Barrel and one at the BLC office.
If that's what it takes, we'll make sure you have coffee every Tuesday. But, um...
The clock is ticking.
Right, right, right. You're not beating my record, so, no. Um, I don't have a lot today. I do want to commend Parks and Recreation for the outstanding Jazz in the Park on last Friday. When you talk about things for people to do in Rockdale, when you talk about something that was planned and executed to the T, it was very well organized, you, it, I felt like I was doing something in downtown, like it was on somebody's rooftop. The picturesque waterfalls from Costly Mill as the backdrop, the, the jet, the band was inside, but you could hear the music outside. Of course, some people had to dance. I don't know who those people are, that every time they hear some music, they have to dance. But we had a good time. Um, I thank you, Ms. Bean, Director Redman, that was, that was, that was an A-plus event, and I hope that we get to do another one this before this year is out. That's really all I have until Dr. Williams reminds me of something.
Commissioner Williams.
So, on the other hand, we had Peace Under the Pavilion Friday night, and there was lots of healthy food and healthy juice drinks.
I missed that invitation.
And there was yoga. There was yoga and meditation and, and those that attended said it was spectacular. I was there for a little bit at the time, but I had invited my neighbor, who is getting his master's from UGA in social work, and I had invited him to come. And I got a text after he got home, said, "This was awesome," and that people, the people were so nice and that it, you know, it was just a great event. Um, I think, you know, I think anytime we can cater to the needs of the people in our community, whatever the event, I think, you know, we're doing what we should be doing and providing those extra things for our community. And then the, the biggest thing is the fact that this is Mental Health Month, May is Mental Health Month, and, of course, that was part of the reason for Peace Under the Pavilion. But it was also very significant that our U.S. Senator Warnock came yesterday to visit our center, our Restorative Complex, Justice Complex Center here in Rockdale County, and so we have a video.
Before we start, that was also the reason for the wine tasting, because some of us have mental health needs that are dealt with different than others.
Self-medicated, you mean?
Right. Exactly.
Myself and the board members, Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, really want to say thank you for taking out the time to, to show an interest and be involved in what we're doing here in Rockdale County.
Stepping Up Initiative was introduced in 2015 at a NACO conference in Washington, D.C. And the goal of that initiative is to reduce the number of people in incarceration who have mental illness and substance abuse disorders.
And so we're grateful for this Restorative Justice Complex. This is a move in the right direction, and I look forward to coming back to Rockdale County for the shovel ceremony and for the beginning of this important work. God bless all of you. Keep the faith.
So, that did not happen spontaneously. I, I will just let you know that we learned on Thursday that he was coming on Monday, and the staff went into full speed ahead and worked all day Thursday, all day Friday, all weekend to get it perfect. And, and it was perfect, down to when each of us should stand and when we should sit and who's going, don't going on the tour and who's going over here. And it was pretty amazing. It was really amazing. And their staff truly, truly appreciated the thought and the effort that had gone in by the staff. They made that happen, and they made all of us look really good.
Amen.
Yes, they did. Let's give them another round of applause, too. I always like to take the moment to define and describe who they are. Let's start off with our Public Relations Department, Director Mims and her team. Give her a round of applause. Who bringing all of our lobbyists and our legislators together? Let's give it to Executive Director Jennifer Rutledge. Let's give Commissioner Williams, who is at the core of all of this, yes. We could never leave out the super talented Mary Lou, Ms. Deidre, Andre from Commissioner Washington's office. Let's give our entire team a round of applause. It really does make me feel proud to say that no one gets anything done by themselves. It takes a collaborative effort, a cohesive team of folks with a shared goal and a shared vision to make something happen. Rockdale could not have been more proud on yesterday to see the way everything executed from A to Z.
Absolutely.
That video is wonderful, but it does not tell the complete story. One of the comments made by the senator as he was exiting Rockdale County and leaving the event is that how well our team orchestrated from the time that he showed up on the property, he and his staff, to the moment they left. He talked about how well organized every step of the way was. I watched Director Mims in her element, in her zone, executing at one of the highest levels. And that's why you bring in people who have talent to get things done, and when you know that you've hired the right individuals, the best thing you can do is get out of the way and allow them to do what they do. Let's give Director Mims another round of applause. Absolutely. Yes. I also want to say that the entire initiative, as you all, and I've already made mention, but I'm going to just add a little bit more here, because Commissioner Williams, this has been at the core and her very existence here on this board, to champion the cause of, 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 of championing mental illness and mental health as relate here in Rockdale County with the Stepping Up Initiative. And now this Restorative Justice Complex is going to really be a blessing for all of Rockdale County, even in the days that we don't even know just yet. When you think about the intersection of criminal justice and mental health, not putting people in a jail, but giving them the help that they need to, to address those needs. And it really is a big, it saves taxpayers, it say, it has law enforcement doing what law enforcement really need to be doing, is going out for the real bad guys, and when they encounter someone who's having an episode, now we have a center of hope, is what I like to call it.
Absolutely.
A place to put those people so they can be properly diagnosed and get the help that they need. Y'all give it up for Commissioner Williams.
So, just let me tell you a story. Yesterday afternoon, I got a call, "Can you come down to Grit and Grace this afternoon?" Grit and Grace is a nonprofit that works side by side with Stepping Up. The Opening Doors to Recovery Project, which is funded by the county and overseen and staffed by Viewpoint Health, to have, they have about 20 clients right now. They have a capacity for 30, but they are working with people coming out of jail. And they, their purpose is to help them find a stable place to live, find some, you know, make sure they have transportation, make sure they can get to their appointments and have adequate treatment, and to have what they are calling a meaningful day, which means you're either employed or you're going to school, but you've got some kind of goal and purpose. So, this young man yesterday was connected, Bill Carruthers, connected with Dr. Anise Mabry, who has a Tears-Free Academy, that she helps people who have gone, who have dropped out of school, out of high school. And, and most of these people are in their twenties, thirties, and, and one year, somebody was in their sixties or seventies, to help them get a high school diploma. And so she worked with this young man, who's participating in our Opening Doors to Recovery Project. He was filling out his graduation application because he had completed the application to graduate from high school. But it wasn't just that. Because of that, he can now participate in the Certified Peers Support Certification, and he is who they, he has had some driving experience, and so he will be hired to drive the van that Grit and Grace has purchased. And so now you see this whole full circle. Somebody who's been incarcerated, who's been given the support he needs, get his education, get some certification, get a job, become a taxpaying citizen, and you could not imagine the smile on his face.
Wow.
Yeah. So, you know, that's, that's the whole vision of everything we're doing, is, is it's not about an initiative or a, a big over, you know, project. It's about people. It's about children. It's about youth. It's about adults who just need extra support. And so, you know, I, obviously, I'm passionate about it.
Yes.
And it really has become my purpose in a lot of what I've done.
Well, Commissioner, thank you, and we appreciate your passion. Your passion has served to be a plus for Rockdale County. I also want to echo the sentiments coming from Commissioner Washington regarding the Friday wine down at Costly Mill. I just want to bring it up again because the number of text messages I received, calls I received, and internally, I know you had a good time, but I don't think there's nobody that had as good of a time as Director Simkins. Director Simkins, yes, I just want to tell you, Director Simkins had a good time. And after his fifth call to my cell phone, when I thought something was wrong, I finally ended that call by saying to him once again, when we did, when we brought him on, "Welcome to Rockdale County." And so, let's give a hats off to Director Redman, Ms. Bean, yes. And, and commissioners, I must, I don't know, one of the things that we don't do internally with our staff and team, we don't micromanage, but we allow them to filter and process and debrief, and I know the director, he and his team, Ms. Bean, are doing just that, but so many of the citizens want to know, will this happen again? Would it happen on a, a greater level and how, what would be the frequency of it? I don't have that answer. I told them I'm yielding to the director. You don't have to announce it right now. When, when the time is appropriate for you to let the cat out of the bag, you can do that, but the interest is there. People like the difference. People like, as she described, a, a kind of a highfalutin, loud, buckhead style setup that you all had, it was top-notch. It was a class act. And not only did staff, but certainly so many calls from the public, it, the difference. And when we were talking just last week about art, culture, and entertainment, this is at the seat. And this is nothing that costs us a million dollars to do, but you're creating opportunities for people to come out, let their hair down, and enjoy in their own backyard. Nobody had to drive to Atlanta. They were, it happened right here, and you bring out so many different people. So, we certainly do appreciate the leadership coming out of Parks and Recreation and Costly Mill and all of what you all did to bring the citizens and give folks options and, and show them alternative arts and culture and entertainment opportunities here in our own backyard. Shifting gears real quick, I do want to, school is coming to an end, public school is coming to an end. I think this Friday is the last day of school.
While they're out.
Yes. So, I want to say to everybody, and I'll be saying this as we move through these third, next 30 days, please be mindful as you move through the subdivisions and neighborhoods, young people are out. Not every child is participating in a summer camp or vacation Bible school at a church, so children are out, moving are out. Watch your speed as you go through the neighborhood. Slow down. Now, particularly because I had this conversation this morning with one of our residents, the folks over in the Philstone community off of Salem Road in that area, there are many communities in Rockdale County, we want you to slow down and watch the speed, but I had a conversation with the resident that lives over there, and she said, "Please, Mr. Chairman, make mention of the folks who are cutting through, because you know there's a portion of Philstone that backs up Rockdale and Newton, and you can go through that subdivision, go from one county to the other." And she said, "They driving like a bat out of you-know-what." So, please slow down. It's a very quiet community, a lot of seniors in that community, people walking their dogs, they're taking walks themselves, and folks just cut through and they drive. So, I'm saying what I'm saying. We don't have a deputy to put on every street, on every corner, in every subdivision. We don't have that many deputies. We're asking you to be mindful. One of the things I do remember about people speeding in the community is, not always, but oftentimes, a lot of the people who live in that very community are the ones who're doing the speeders. This community that I'm talking about does have a cut through from Rockdale to Newton, so we have a little bit of that transition drive in taking place, but also for those residents, and may not be you, the homeowner, maybe your child or your grandchild, please remind them to be mindful of people in the community out walking and enjoying a stroll in their community. No one needs to have to dive on the side of the road or, or dodge traffic to avoid being run over. And the other thing, because this is the season when animal control calls from animal services go up. Your dog is supposed to be on a leash, okay? Everybody don't like dogs, okay? If you out at Johnson Park on the trail, if you over at Wheeler Park on the trail, put your dog on a leash. I don't care how cute it is, everybody don't like dogs. I'm, I'm saying this on behalf of, I'm a dog, we own a dog, we've owned dogs for years, but I realize and respect, everyone don't like dogs, okay? And if your dog poop in the park, we've got poop pickup stations. They're over there, absolutely. Bend down, get the bag, pick up the poop, and dispose of it properly. Our Parks and Rec Maintenance Crew, that's not their job. They're not doing that. Whatever Mother Nature and the rain don't do, we leaving it up to you. So, I'm just saying what I'm saying. The stations are there, the signs are there to remind you. While I'm thinking about Wheeler Park, I have to give a big shout-out, commissioners, and y'all haven't been to the park, but you're going to love what I'm about to tell you. Hats off to Director Hammer and Director Redman. We have lights that are now in the core section of the trail, the most darkest section of the trail. Yes. About 30 days or less ago, I met Director Hammer and Director Redman out in the, there's a section of that trail known as the hole. It's the darkest section, and there's a handful of people that start walking about 5:00 a.m., and it's still dark at 6:00 a.m. Well, when they get to the entrance way to what is called the hole, the darkest section, they don't go through. They turn around and they go back the other way. Well, they want to really enjoy the full walk, but because their fear for safety and security, it's extremely dark. The two directors met me over there less than a month. We have solar-operated lights throughout that core section of where it's the darkest the most. I don't know who the citizen was, but it's somebody on Facebook was shouting and almost doing a holiness shout on Facebook as they was making the announcement about the lights. And she said, "Do y'all see what I see? We have lights on the trail, and people are excited about it because, let me tell you, you can't take safety and security for granted. We're seeing all of the things that's happening in our region." And I really give them a round of applause. They did a great job. Absolutely. Commissioners, this is about being proactive. There's no need for us to watch the news and hear the stories moving across the region and simply wait until something happens here. When we can be proactive and get ahead of the curve, that's exactly what we need to do. And I give hats off to Director Hammer, who's the Director of General Services, and to Director Redman, who is our Director of Parks and Recreation. They collaborated together, and they worked very close together to make sure that they installed the lights. There's more safety and security that's coming. We're going to make sure it's in line with our budget to make sure that we are taking care of our citizens. People should feel safe when they're walking our trails. Also, in the same vein of our trails, I got to give a shout-out to Director Morgan because the AED heart defibrillators, let's give them a round of applause. Absolutely. I've been seeing them all around the county. There's one at the restroom area there on Wheeler Park. It's installed there. There's another one, if I'm not mistaken, is at the entrance of JP Car, when you go into the building. I saw it somewhere, yes, there's one there, and I think they're out at Costly Mill. I've seen one out on the trail as well. So, that kind of proactive thinking, think about it. If someone's out on the trail and they have an episode or a heart attack or what have you, you know how long it's going to take to get a unit out there? But if we have the equipment that can help with some time-saving and save a person's life, and when the public know that these pieces of equipment are there, it can help save a person's life. So, we can't put one all along the trail, but we can strategically place them throughout the trail, and the more people are aware that they're there, if there's something that happens, we can have the right response and be able to address the need and render aid what it is. So, Director of EMA, Dan Morgan, give it up for him one more time. Director Dan Morgan. Commissioners, I want to say that we are definitely rocking and rolling in Rockdale County. There are so many wonderful things that are happening. The collaboration between the Office of the Chairman and the Office of the Mayor for the City of Conyers, we're working on some really wonderful opportunities for our community as, as a whole. I often brag periodically about the fact that we have a very good relationship with Mayor Evans and the City Manager, Tony Lucas, and the City Council. We only have one city here in Rockdale County, and that's Conyers. And it just makes sense that we work well together on different initiatives. And listening to some of the things that they're working on over at the city, knowing all of the different projects that we have here at the county, I am confident when I say that Rockdale County is moving in the right direction. We also want to give, I cannot be remiss if we don't take advantage of this, last Tuesday in the pouring rain over at JP Car, we had the comprehensive strategic plan overview, and it was for the public. There was one citizen that came out, and I want to give her another public round of applause, Ms. Charlotte Geller. Give it up for Ms. Charlotte Geller. Yes. Ms. Geller, I don't know whether you're into rap music, but I can hear the lyrics of the sound when that rapper said, "We're on the way up. Started from the bottom and now we here." You were there in the midst of the rain, and you, you represent, you're always on point. I really mean what you're doing, and we appreciate your presence because our staff stayed after hours to make sure that we can entertain any questions or comments from our public. We, we want the public to be involved as we move and plan to move Rockdale forward. We need the feedback. We need the input. It's easy, even in the midst of this broadcast right here, for folks to be online and, and put all, have all that keyboard courage and write all the negative comments, but when you're putting, when you're on, on the scene and being a part of the solutions and being a part of the suggestions, that's what we need and that's what we welcome. And it doesn't mean you have to agree with us all the time, because you don't always agree with us, but you're present and you participate and you're an active citizen, and we certainly do appreciate that. Also, I want to transition to the reminder about the Transportation Open House tonight. Director Kelly and his team along with Ms. Lisa Chester, they'll be over at the new, if you haven't been to see- if you haven't been to CE Steel, you are in for a treat over at the CE Steel Community. It, it's going to become, Commissioner Washington, the hottest new place in town, CE Steel, because of the way it looks.
So I drove by there, I can't remember if it was yesterday or the day before, and there was an event going on.
Yes.
And it looked awesome.
Yes.
I had a, a community meeting there about a week ago, and the citizens loved it, they absolutely loved it.
Well, CE Steel is on the red out, and there's the flyer on the screen, Public House Number Two is going to happen this evening between 5:00 and 7:00 PM over at the CE Steel Building. We encourage you to come out, uh, this evening and give input. We, listen to this, we want to hear from you. We welcome your input, we welcome your feedback. This is your county, this is your community, we want to hear from you. So that's going to take place tonight from 5:00 to, between 5:00 and 7:00 PM at the CE Steel. Slow down as you're going through the communities, the children will be out of school, watch as, watch your speed as you're going through the communities. I, I do want to remind everybody to be vigilant and to be safe, uh, there's a lot happening in the region. I want to make sure that when I say that, people don't get confused, because I still believe that we live in one of the, if not the safest counties in the state of Georgia, particularly in the northern region, or should I say the, the metro region here in Atlanta, uh, here in Rockdale County. Yes, every now and then, something happens, yes. But we're not that county that you see night after night after night, uh, news broadcast after news broadcast. And hats off to Chief Scott Freeman and Sheriff Levitt for always being on top of getting the job done and making sure that we can feel safe here in Rockdale County. But citizens have to do their part, we have to do our part, so we're encouraging you, uh, to do your part and be on top of, of what we need. Now, I want to go over to Chief Sanders, uh, because I'm staying track of the time, I got a clean, clear message from Commissioner Washington, because, Chief Sanders, is there any updates on something that we're overlooking this morning?
Um, PR does have a clip to run for the Walk of Heroes event for Memorial Day.
All right, very good, Pub Relations.
And while we're waiting on that, um, we do have, uh, the Transit Open House tonight that you mentioned at CE Steel. Um, we're also, uh, they're going to run a, a brief flyer on the Juneteenth presentation.
Okay, very good. And when is the rubber ducky race coming up? June 15th. You got a little bit more time before we start broadcasting that one as well. So there we have it.
There we have it, on May 29th at 11:00 AM at the Walk of Heroes, which is out at Black Shoals Park.
Very good, and this year, the keynote speaker is Major General Les J. Carroll, a soldier retired from the US Army. They always have wonderful speakers at this event. I want to encourage you, if you have nothing going on, come out to the Memorial Day event out for the Walk of Heroes. They do a wonderful job hosting this event each year during Memorial Day weekend. Anything else, Chief?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, all right, Executive Director Redmond.
I just have one, uh, quick announcement that the zoning public hearing that's scheduled for Thursday night at 6:00 PM, we are going to move that into the auditorium, um, that way we'll have enough room in case there's, there's, there's a pretty long agenda, so we want to make sure we accommodate everybody. So again, Thursday night, 6:00 PM, the auditorium.
Very good, and before we close out, Director Redmond has something he want to share with us, come on up, Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to, uh, make this a reminder, one of the beach reopening this weekend, so that is this weekend, Sunday, at Costly Mill from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
All right, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM this Sunday.
Yes, sir.
At Costly Mill. You get wet in the water.
Yes, sir. We had a lot of, um, responses on Facebook asking about it, so I just wanted to just remind everyone that is this weekend.
All right, very good, and, uh, that is going to be, we've had several folks asking about the beach out at Costly Mill, so, uh, this Sunday from 11:00 to 3:00. We asked that everybody that wanted to bring the kiddos, or you just want to cool off yourself, you can splish splash, you can come on out and jump in the water at Costly Mill, and you'll have, Commissioner?
I'm trying to leave.
Okay, and there's another one, okay, uh, come on up, uh, Director, you, you, like, they got you rolling up here now, so, go back to the other one.
Yeah, go back to the, um...
Just talk about that one for a minute.
So on Monday, June 19th, which is Juneteenth holiday for the county, we will have a, uh, special, uh, movie showing of a film, uh, by a local producer, a local filmmaker, it's called Never Again. Uh, it just really touches on the topic of Juneteenth, uh, how important it is in just the black culture and, you know, where we come, came from to where we're going. So that will be at JP Car Community Center, June 19th, um, from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM.
Wow, now, what's the entry? Tell me about, how, how does someone...
It is free, it is free entry, uh, we will have popcorn, we will have it set up like a, a small movie theater, uh, for the viewing.
Sounds good, you know, as we are moving towards the Juneteenth holiday, uh, I talked a couple of years ago about, um, the importance of educating people, uh, and I talked about the fact that there's a good number of blacks, African Americans, that did not know the education behind Juneteenth. And I don't believe in celebrating something that I don't know. Here's another opportunity to expose people, not just young people, but people in general, to understanding the core and the history behind Juneteenth and some of those things related and associated to the holiday. It's a free event that's going to take place, and we encourage it, and I also know that there's a book related to this movie.
There is a book, and the author will be on site, um, to give autographed copies of that book.
The first 100 attendees will receive a free copy of the book. Now, I mean, it doesn't get any better, when you're talking about educating people, Alandria, it doesn't get any better than that. And you will come to the movie, you walk away with a book, you got the movie and the book to reflect it, parents, if you're into literacy, and if you're into history and education, and even if you're not into it, you ought to be, particularly those folks who are going to be wearing all the caps and T-shirts, celebrating Juneteenth. You need to know what you're celebrating, come out, we're asking for you to come and participate. This is a wonderful opportunity to educate the public about, as we prepare to move into this Juneteenth holiday. I think you got another flyer coming up.
What else? Oh, Concert Series, I think I saw that next, yes, Summer Concert Series, so that also begins next month. Uh, Summer Concert Series runs the last Sunday of each month, beginning June through September, June, July, August, September. So the first artists we will have this year will be the Corey Brown Band, and the Summer Concert Series will be at Costly Mill Park, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The gates normally open a little before that, depending on the traffic demand that we have around 4:30. So, uh, come on out, everyone, bring your lawn chairs, we have, uh, a number of citizens that are familiar with this event, and they requested, and they're, they're happy to see it back, so.
Very good, now, will you have a special section for the Stormwater Director?
I will.
Okay.
We have tents for Stormwater.
Okay, all right. You know how excited he gets.
We, we do, we do. And just real quick, Chairman, I just do want to acknowledge, uh, Costly Mill Park and the staff, uh, Ms. Bean is the manager there, you come on up, Ms. Bean. I do not like taking credit for everything, um...
Stand up, Ms. Bean. Y'all give Ms. Bean another round of applause, stand up, absolutely.
You gonna let her practice her Toastmasters right now? Um, but her, her and her team and Ms. Lavanda Bruton, they worked really hard to put on the Wind Down event, and just to be honest with you, we really were, were interested in to see what type of response we had for this event, and it was overwhelming response. Uh, we have had citizens to make comments about what there is to do, and this was an event catered for adults, for adults, so the beach opening will be catered for kids and everyone else. But, uh, we did want to cater towards the adults and have something, and I was explaining to Alandria as the event came to, um, to begin, when we initially built the event center, this was one of the goals that we had, and since Alandria's been the manager at Costly Mill, her infectious personality has really enhanced that part from the rebranding of it to the programming and the additions that she has made, so I just want to really give her credit for what she's done.
Y'all noticing, Alandria trying to take a shout moment, don't let it in there, James, let it back out here. Uh, come on up to the podium, uh, Madam Toastmasters, tell us a little bit about, from, we like to hear from, we heard from your boss, from the director, but we...
Director Ramon says everything, Chairman.
Stay with us, stay with us, I want you to tell us a little bit about your bookings, because you told them that you slotted with book requests and reservations for Costly Mill, tell us what's going on out there.
Yes, we're actually, this is our busiest season from April until about September. We're booked with weddings, family reunions, graduations is taking over May and June. We book out a year, I like to tell everyone, we book out a year, so now we're, we are booking right now for May of 2024, and we do have people calling about, uh, next year bookings. But, um, it's just exciting to see that we are booked, a lot of people are stating they're calling. Um, the phones stay busy, let's just say that we need someone just to answer the phones because our phones stay busy with people calling, and they tend to get a little upset when they say, "Well, I thought I was doing something calling a month in advance." I say, "No, these people booked this last year," and that's the thing, people that are booking the events, they're calling back booking for next year.
Fantastic.
We have a lot of bookings that, um, people just call back and say, "I want to book for next year." Family reunions, church functions, the beach pavilion is our popular, uh, outdoor rental space right there on the beach at the pavilion, so we're just super excited about all the amazing events. And just to go back to the Friday Wind Down, we got so many raving reviews, not only from our, um, internal staff, I know Chief Mack, she texts me, said, "What a wonderful event," and the citizens are very excited, and they're already saying, "Okay, are we doing this? When are we doing this again?" So we definitely are looking at dates to try to fit in and work maybe one or two more Friday Wind Downs, but we are excited about the event center in Costly Mill Park. We want to attract more people to the park, and we're just super excited about all the events that we have planned for the rest of the year.
Well, we certainly appreciate what you've done. I heard your director talk about attitudes and everything, he said your infectious attitudes, what he said, is really driving the leadership out there and turning things around. People enjoy working with pleasant people who provide good quality customers, so y'all give another round of applause.
I just want to get it down by myself, I have an awesome team, all of my, my entire team, even Ms., I want to shout out Ms. Lavanda Bruton, she's another good team player, even though she's managed, the operations manager at Johnson Park, we all work together to make things happen.
Very good, thank you so much, Director.
Before she sits down, just, and I'm so glad PR put this picture up, so, uh, I am currently one of the co-chairs for Leadership Rockdale, so, um, at the beginning of this month, we had the graduation for Class of 2023, and as you see on the picture from the county, Ms. Darlene Mitchell, uh, Ms. Alandria Bean, and Ms. Andrea Lee were all graduates of Leadership Rockdale Class of 2023. Just wanted to give them a shout out.
Yes, yes, Ms. Darlene Mitchell, she holds it down for Judge Wood, and y'all know Ms. Lee holds it down for Chairman Ezra, let's give them another round of applause. So many wonderful things, because we have so many wonderful people, that's why things are moving at the rate and the speed. I really get excited when we hear about positive attitudes and good quality customer service. Uh, Commissioners, I become like you all, super excited when we get so much feedback from our citizens who have enjoyed an event or an activity, uh, in and around, uh, Rockdale County. So many wonderful things as we move into the summer, uh, season, we encourage you to check our website and check out all of our, um, out, media outlets and platforms where you can find this information about what's happening here in Rockdale County. I want to make sure that I'm not overlooking anything that's red hot and, and, and super, super important. Um, Deputy Director Richard Davis, is there anything, uh, I just thought I'd check with you, I don't know why in my mind, is there anything we're overlooking, sir?
Uh, no, sir, I think someone turned in a red car.
Oh, oh, okay, I think we, we've, we've all, we, yeah, we already passed that, yeah, we passed that, yeah, yes, sir. In fact, watch this, Executive Director Redmond.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any need for, uh, uh, executive, uh, session this afternoon?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy Tuesday, this meeting is, is adjourned.